This one? Oh. Where's the switch? Oh, okay. The meeting will come to order. The special town budget meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Guilford, Connecticut, will be held at the Green Community Center, 32 Church Street in Guilford, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Nominations are now in order for moderator.
Nominate Paul Cello, second.
Any further nominations? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Okay, Mr. Cello.
Good evening. Tonight, I thought we would have this town meeting slightly different than we've had in the past. In the past, I've asked for those who wanted to speak against and those who wanted to speak for the budget. I think tonight, let's just open it up to a roundtable discussion. Whoever wants to comment on the budget, please feel free to come up and do so. The only thing I'm going to ask is that you limit your comments to five minutes or under. Two things I just want to review for the sake of the town meeting. Section 7.3, subsection D of the Town Charter says, "No recommended appropriation may be increased by the meeting, nor may any appropriation be made for a purpose not recommended by the Board of Finance. Any proposed appropriation may, however, be reduced by the meeting to a sum less than that recommended by the Board of Finance, provided that there are at least 300 eligible voters are in attendance and voting upon a motion to reduce, and at least 200 vote in favor of said motion." Well, we don't have 300 voters here, so we don't have to worry about that, but I just, I always like to review it. So, who would like to lead off? Please. And would you introduce yourself?
Yes. Hi, my name is Ken Ponatara, and I live in North Guilford. And regardless of how you feel about the budget, if you're for the increase or not, I just want to put things in perspective for you about the fact that unfortunately, the cavalry is not going to come to our rescue. The state of Connecticut is in fiscal crisis. So before we even look at ourselves, let's look where we go to get support, and that is the state. I'm taking my statistics from the Mercantist Center of George Mason University, and they are the leading authority in the United States and the world on matters of numbers and reality. I want you to know that we can be proud to say that out of 50 states in the United States, Connecticut comes 50th, last. The only area that is worse off than us is the state or the area of Puerto Rico, which is 51st. And I'll just hit five key points about their figures to let you know what we are dealing with here. So how do they come up with us being 50th? Number one is cash solvency. It's how much cash on a daily basis comes into the state and how much we pay out, counts payable, just the general running of the state. Well, our revenue is only 94% of what we spend on a daily basis. So the state of Connecticut is losing money every day, every time. Money is not coming in. Based on our population of the state today, which has been declining year after year after year, as well as Guilford, the money, the people are disappearing. And we can look at the businesses as well, because a large source of our peoples comes from the business that employs them, and they are leaving. So, okay, so I mentioned cash solvency. Day to day, we're losing. Next, budget solvency. Do we run a shortfall? Connecticut is ranked 50th out of 50 states. We are losing money. We have a negative ratio where liabilities exceeding assets by 34% or roughly $9,000 for every man, woman, and child in the state of Connecticut. Now remember, these are the people that are, the state is supposed to help us, rescue us, you know, before we even start to look at our own concerns. Okay, let's go on to long-term solvency. This is even worse. We are ranked 47th in the country, which means, long-term, I'm not talking about getting through 17. I'm not looking to get through 20. Long-term Connecticut is going to continue and continue to run into fiscal problems. And I can guarantee you, and I don't want to sound political, but with a Democratic in charge of the state and Democrats controlling the entire House, spending is a priority and money is going out the door. Service level solvency. Here, you might think this is a nice number. We're ranked 27th. That means, out of all the states, we have a little room to tax more. Isn't that great? We're ranked 27th. We don't have a lot of room to tax people for more money. We don't have a lot of small businesses to tax more. We don't have a lot of large corporations. People are living, leaving. And I'm not talking just hedge fund managers. I'm talking about the bread and butter, the people that we need to make a community survive. And the last is the trust fund solvency. Connecticut is ranked 39th. And let me just hit the figures for you. Unfunded pensions are $83.31 billion on a guaranteed-to-be-paid basis. Another post-employment benefits, OPEBs, are $19.53 billion. The total liabilities for the state of Connecticut of these is 53% of the total state personal income. Do you understand what that is? That means, for just the retirees that work for our state, 53, and this is guaranteed, 53% of our revenue is already lost. So we have 47% to try to do everything else. So when you listen to the both sides of this, if you listen to both sides of this conversation, I want you to realize, things are not going to be getting better. I'm sorry to tell you. And I've been to a few of our meetings, which are held once a month with the selectmen, and believe me, they have some great ideas, and I like them too, but we're not in a position to do it. So I just hope you realize that nobody, there is no Santa Claus. No one is coming to our rescue. No one is going to help us out. So you look at your pocketbooks and you make your decisions, and you decide on how you want to vote on this budget. I say, we should keep the budget as it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please come up.
Hi, George Mack, from Hamlock Avenue in North Guilford. Yesterday morning, I spoke to the Board of Selectmen about some of my concerns, as I often do. I want to repeat a couple of those and add a few comments. Many taxpayers are tired of the priorities set by the town and by the Board of Education. We want change, and we want austerity. Just a couple of examples, which some of you may see as petty, but I use as my examples of priorities, of misplaced priorities, I witnessed yesterday. Every morning, I walk around the green for my exercise. While going for a walk downtown, because I can't walk in my area, I don't have sidewalks. I noticed the public works with streets sweeping the parking places around the green. And when I got to City, the Town Hall, there was a gentleman with a leaf blower backpack. He was blowing the leaves, I counted, all five of the leaves, from the sidewalk in front of Town Hall, and then the entrance to the parking lot. Are these really priorities when taxpayers are demanding budget cuts? As I told the Board of Selectmen yesterday, maybe someone should drive up to North Guilford, drive up my street, and look at the three-to-four-foot weeds growing all the way up my street and into the street. Leaf blowing, weeds on my street. I don't see, though, the leaf blowing as the best way to spend on my taxes. I'm also appalled when I read in the paper that according to the Superintendent Friedman for the Board of Education, he stated that they will not designate where he will make $750,000 cut until after a successful referendum. I make this suggestion. How about if we don't pass a budget until he tells us where he's cutting that money? I have a right to know where my money is spent. I have a right to know where it's cut. It's my money. It's not his money. It's not Monopoly money. I worked hard for my money, okay? And I deserve to know what you're doing with it. The condescending attitude to close reminds me of a now very infamous quote made by US Congressman Nancy Pelosi, referring to Obamacare. She said, quote, "We have to pass the bill so you can find out what's in it, away from the fog of the controversy," end quote. She was condescending now, and you are equally condescending to us now.
Who else would like to come up and speak? Please come up. Please introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Sam Garitz. I live on 290 North River Street here in Guilford. And I'm going to take maybe a slightly different tack than the two previous speakers and really focus on what makes this town such a special place. So my wife and I moved here with our one-year-old daughter in 2001, and in the 15 years we've lived in Guilford, what's really impressed me about this town is its strong sense of community. Guilfordites, for the most part, agree that this is a special place, and we're, we all seem to be dedicated to preserving the character of this town. Now, we may disagree on what we need to do to preserve that character, but I think we all feel like we're in this together. We often cast aside our partisan differences to do what's best for the town, even though we may have individual preferences that are different. And two examples I would cite most recently are the sweeping majorities that authorize the purchase of the Goss property, and also the new high school, which was badly needed. And in both cases, the town really rallied together to make those things happen. So I guess with this year's budget referendum, things have been pretty contentious. And I'd like everybody in the room to actually just take a deep breath and realize that we're all here because we care. And that's a, that's a good thing for this town, that we all care so much about the town. But we also need to recognize that we're all in this together, and so regardless of the outcome, and I'm actually hoping that on Tuesday, we vote this budget through so we can, we can move forward, but after Tuesday, we're going to need to work together to maintain the spirit and the character of this town that we all love so much. There's another thing that I think has been missing from, from the debate that's been going on, and I think we really need to recognize the efforts of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, and countless others who have been working day and night, really, to resolve this budget impasse. Now, for the most part, these are volunteer jobs, and I think what we really need to recognize is that this is a thankless task, but these are also our neighbors. So unlike, you know, a lot of the stuff that's going on in Hartford or in Washington, the folks who are making the decisions here have to live with them. And, and for that reason, I think we need to show them a great deal of respect. We may not agree with what they want to do, but we need to respect them, and I think there are times when we have not been doing that. So in speaking out in favor of the budget, and sorry about the lengthy introduction, the reason I'm in favor of the budget is because I'm really concerned about the cuts to education. And in particular, I'm concerned about what will happen if this current budget doesn't pass. You know, the kids in this town are a tremendous resource, and they are, they are our future. And we've made a lot of commitments to our children. We make a lot of commitments to our children at home, but as a town, as a community, we've made a lot of commitments to the, to the children of this town. And I'm very concerned that another round of cuts are going to, are going to, it's going to cause damage that's irreparable. So with that in mind, I would say that those cuts that we're talking about now, I think we can manage those, but if the budget doesn't pass on Tuesday, the kind of damage that's going to be done to the education system of Guilford isn't consistent with the spirit of this community. We look out for each other here. And with that in mind, I just want to encourage you to vote yes on Tuesday, June 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Whom else would like to come up and speak? Please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Meg Furnas-Weisberg, and I live in North Guilford on Elm Street, and I am totally new to this. So I have nothing prepared. I came here, this is my first time being involved in a town meeting, and like the previous speaker, I'm a parent here, and like the previous speaker, my family moved to Guilford for the schools. Now, I haven't been following the debate word for word. I have to say, I was shocked when the budget didn't pass the first time, and completely stunned when it didn't pass the second time. So I need to go back and do my homework and find out what the concerns are and what the debates are against the budget. But I'm concerned that we might be voting against it for the wrong reasons. And please correct me if I am wrong on this, but I'm wondering if maybe some of the people voting against the budget think, oh, this education is so expensive, all these town services, the parks, this is expensive, I don't go to this. And like all of us, we all worked hard for our money, and we want it to go to good things. But like the previous speaker said, I agree that many of these services, including the schools, are what make Guilford such a unique place, such a special place, and what entice people to move here. And something that we should keep in mind is, even if you don't have children in the school systems, this school system is known not only in the state, but in the region. I know people in other states in New England and the tri-state area who are thinking of moving to Connecticut in order to put their children in the Guilford schools. And do you know what that does? That maintains incredible property values. So even if you don't have children in the schools, our school system is helping you financially by keeping property values really high. I mean, imagine trying to sell the same house you live in, in a town without such an amazing school system? It would not be worth as much. So again, like the previous speaker, I'd like to encourage all of us to come together as a town, because this is what makes Guilford such a wonderful place, and I'd like to encourage us all to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Whom else? Come on.
Chris Moore, 151 Whitfield Street. I moved to town in 2002. I am currently a member of the Board of Education, and I stood here at this very place about eight years ago and advocated for moving forward with building a new high school. And I think that that was the right decision. That was a process that we looked at for a very long time. I see many faces here who were involved in that discussion, in particular, Mike Ailes, who really did a thorough analysis of the fact that building a new high school was actually much more economical than trying to repair the high school that existed. Six years ago, I stood in front of you and talked about the fact that we needed to not raid the undesignated fund balance, the rainy day fund, in order to keep taxes low, that we needed to fund that in order to help our bond rating and to have fiscal solvency for the town. I'm proud to say that Guilford is not Washington, and it's not Hartford. And I think, you know, in reference to what the first speaker was talking about, there are some very significant issues at the state level, but I feel with the budget that it's really not going to be wise to cut into things at the local level in order to spite what you may see happening at the state or national level. I do want to say that, you know, I was, I wish I could say I was surprised at the turnout on the first round, 14%, 14.7%. It's continued to disappoint me over my years here that the turnout isn't higher for something that makes so much of a difference on our day-to-day life that someone can't take five minutes to vote. But with the second vote, I do want to say that I don't believe it was a result of the 5% signs that came up, as disappointing as those were in a small community, and I don't think it really was a turnout issue, even though it was only 28% turnout. So the message that I get from that is that there are people who are really hurting, and that we need to revisit some of the initiatives that we've come to propose as part of our budgets. Cindy Cartier sent a long letter to all of the elected boards. I've been speaking with her and Ken McKenzie, who are two people who are really speaking to ways to look at efficiencies, and I think we hear you. And I, as a board member, will personally commit to looking at those in the capacity that I can as one of nine members on the board. But I think it's important, from the Board of Ed's side, that people understand some of the issues that we do face. There are certain mandates at the state and federal level, in particular, things like special needs, which I'm proud to say Guilford is one of the leaders in the state in terms of our meeting the needs of these students, but it really takes, it was close to a quarter of our budget. We've actually been able to reduce that to closer to 20, 22% with some efficiencies, but these are laws that, you know, we can't dodge. We need to fund these students. The other thing that happens at the state level that people may not be aware of is binding arbitration, which is the state law that if we can't reach an agreement with the unions, we go to arbitration, and there's a decision between the two opposing sides that doesn't split the difference. It decides on one position or the other based on what's going on around the state. So it makes it very difficult to, you know, people talk about 0% increases. Well, it's just not going to happen, at least locally. I mean, you can, we could talk about what happens at the state, and I agree, there's issues with binding arbitration, there's issues with the pension funding at the state level. But at the local level, we're doing our best to negotiate with the unions. The Board of Ed is predominantly people, people that teach, people that work with the kids, and cuts to the BOE are going to have to come from those people. So when I look at Guilford, you know, I do note that you have to take kind of a, a more global look at the state. Guilford is doing really quite well. Our per pupil spending is right, or it should be, relative to other towns, and the results that we've gotten, I think, are excellent. Our equalized mill rate is also right in there with other towns. I'm not saying that, you know, Connecticut isn't high, but you have to understand that Connecticut has made a decision to, you know, have 169 towns where you have things like a town meeting and communities that can decide things. And there are some inefficiencies with that, but there's also some advantages to having a say. So I do hope that we pass this third budget, not trying to say that we won't take a very serious look at whatever we can do with efficiencies, but I also wanted to address the comment that, you know, the Board of Ed and the superintendent need to tell you what we're going to cut before we have a budget. Well, you know, I, I am all for dialogue about that, but the thing is, we had a budget that very specifically outlined what we thought were the priorities. And we had numerous meetings about that, including two public meetings that were sparsely attended. I believe there were only two people, and they spoke for more music and art teaching. So we didn't have anyone that came to the Board of Ed and said, you know, cut this, cut that. And it's very hard and time-consuming for us to budget without understanding, you know, what number we're shooting for. And, you know, what I will say is, from the Board of Ed's side, we're going to do what all Boards of Ed have done for time immemorial, which is, when the cuts come through, we're going to try to save the things that are important, which is the teachers and the class sizes. And what does that come at the expense of? Well, it's things like capital that don't have an immediate effect, but that in 10 years, people come in and say, oh, you haven't been maintaining the schools. And the answer is, well, you know, we tried to have the funds to do that, but when it came down to it, we felt that, you know, having the teachers in the classroom was more important. The high school bond, the majority of it is coming in on this budget, and without that, there would essentially be no increase in the budget this year. We do have a slightly declining school population, not as far as we thought we would, probably due to excellent education, a new high school, full-day kindergarten. But we do hope to realize some efficiencies there. However, you know, it is important to understand that we have been making up a lot in terms of our capital expenditures over the last few years. Our buildings are in much better shape than they were when I took office on the Board seven years ago. So in sum, you know, people are working hard. We have no interest in squandering your money. We know it's hard-earned. We are taxpayers as well. We want the best for our kids and the best for our town. We're open to hearing from you, and we encourage opportunity. I'm obviously preaching to the choir here, but I do think, you know, it's important to turn out and vote whatever your feeling is. I hope you'll support it on June 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Certainly. By all means.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Moira Rader, and I live in the Mulberry Point area of town. First and foremost, I'm a parent. I have four children in the Guilford schools at three different locations. I am also a business owner, and I'm also a Realtor here in town. So I come from a few different perspectives, and I agree with the speakers who said, whether, whatever side you're on, it's really important that we do remember the, the bigger picture. I feel like in all debates in life, sometimes people lose focus on what the big picture is. Although I wear many hats, my most important hat is as a mother. And my husband and I, four years ago, chose Guilford. We were being relocated back to Connecticut, a state we love, and out of many towns we could have lived on, from Fairfield up to Old Saybrook, we chose this town. My husband had a history of working as an architect and school design, knew the school systems very well, and knew that Guilford had an outstanding reputation. So here we are, and we haven't doubted our decision from one moment since that time. Our kids are getting an amazing education. They have fantastic teachers, wonderful principals, and more important than that, an amazing community. I love this town. I'm invested in this town. I'm very active in this community. But what I don't want to see happen is this budget not pass, and then we all stare at each other when all the things start to fall away that make this town so great, and say, what did we do? Why did we let our political, you know, opinions or our personal financial opinions affect what makes this town wonderful? And I know a lot of people will get up here and say, yeah, Guilford is great, but we can't keep spending. But the alternative is, is to lose the very facets and things, especially in the schools, that make it such a wonderful place for our children to be educated, because they are our future. I know it's cliche, but it's the truth. You know, what I would hate to see happen is class sizes change. You know, what I would hate to see happen is class sizes changed, or paraprofessionals lost, or math or teaching coaches lost. I would hate to see the facilities themselves fall into disrepair. These are all big wish lists, I understand. But if you don't take the time to really think about it and to look at the budget... They've already made significant cuts to the original budget. I think they were smart. I think they were looking at the resources that they have and still working very strategically to protect and insulate our children. And I hope you would remember that and vote yes for the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Gus Cowrog, 335 Boston Street. I'm standing before you tonight as a native of Guilford. And to be perfectly honest, when I was 18 years old, I was of the mindset that I couldn't get far enough away from this town. But when my wife and I, who's also a native of Guilford, decided we needed to find a town to raise our kids in, we were looking at Clinton, Branford, because we thought it was more affordable, and really decided there was no other place than Guilford to raise our own family. You know, fortunate to travel a lot of places around the world and around the country and have the perspective to know how special Guilford is. And, you know, is it Bluffhead? Is it the green? Is it the shoreline? Yes. Is it the people who live here? Yes. But I really think it's also the institutions of town government and of the school system that really hold this town together. It's the fabric that holds us all together. And, you know, I sat in a meeting about a week ago to listen to the further budget cuts that were coming. On the one hand, I thought, wow, that's a big cut. I hope that is gonna appease the folks who are opposed to the budget. And on the other hand, I said, wow, I feel like we're starting to cut deep, and we might be hitting bone, so to speak, to use that metaphor. And I want to really implore the town leaders to... You know, I trust that you have made cuts that are livable. I also wear a hat as a parent of a child with special needs. And as fate would have it, choosing to live in Guilford was a real benefit in that sense as well, because the special ed programs are so strong here. And, you know, just to give a little anecdote, when you have to make cuts like this, and to some extent, they're top-down cuts, and they need to be distributed down through the system. And in the case of special education, one of the places that tends to be easy to cut is with the paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals are not always educators by training, but they're often people who have the life skills and experience to provide an educational assistance to kids with special needs that goes beyond what a teacher could give in many cases. And, you know, I for one know that my child could not really make it through the school day without the paraprofessional to be there to assist him and other kids in the classroom so that they can really get all that they can from their education experience. Because he's gonna be a member of this town as well. He is today, and I expect that he will be as an adult as well. And I also have a typical child. And I, you know, wish the best for her and wherever she chooses to live. But I hope she has a perspective like mine to recognize what a special town this is. And really, I think, in closing, just want to stay... State that there are people... I think there are quite a few people in town who maybe haven't... Didn't get out to vote and maybe not be sitting here tonight, who, like me, maybe aren't happy just with the status quo and with maintaining and sustaining. We actually want better for Guilford. There is a camp that wants to keep improving Guilford. And, you know, I think if we need to make further cuts, we're gonna be limiting our ability to not only maintain the town, but improve the town. So thank you. I implore everybody to get out and vote yes for this budget. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Sir?
Hi. My name is Jefferson Freeman. I live at 77 Broad Street, which meant I could walk here. I have very few comments to make, but I want to make a couple of observations. The total budget that's presented, as I understand it right now, the revised budget, represents an increase of about $2.4 million. The actual town and school part of that is roughly $500,000. Roughly half a percent of the total. It's going to up. The rest of it has to do with decisions that we, as citizens of this town, made in the past to purchase the Goss property and build the new high school and so forth. And so now we have... Are having to live with the investments that we've made. Whether we should have made them or not is a question. It's in the past. We did make them. So we have to keep in... I think it's very helpful to keep in context the fact that the amount that's going up is really not that significant in terms of the total budget that's going on right now. I have no idea how much of that is meant... Of that half-million dollars or so is mandated by health insurance and other factors. How much of it is discretionary? I suspect that's a fair piece of it that's mandated. We are really not faced with a very significant budget when we consider a budget increase, when we consider what we are getting for what we are paying. And I would certainly vote in favor of the budget again. And I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Joe Petrowski. I'm gonna quote something that former First Selectman Carballos Tracy said back around 2010, when the economic crisis started to hit. He said something to the effect that if we all stick together and work together, it'll all work out. Well, here it is, six, seven years later. Our town is in a very good financial position. Our fund balance has grown. We just approved a $92 million high school. But yet, here we are. I've been through a few of these, and every time we go through this, the town employees are on the hit list. We get into discussions about negotiations and binding arbitration and the salary levels. Of course, it accounts for close to 80% of the operating budget. Those are our tax dollars. It should be discussed. If people don't like the way it works, this is America. They could go to Mexico. They could go to Taiwan. Okay, the Koreas, or even China. But this is America, and this is what we do. One thing that I was waiting for one of the members of the three boards to say that they didn't was when we went through a financial situation in this town, somebody's bargaining unit stepped up to the plate and threw away their contracts to help us out. That we have to remember. So maybe we should think twice before we put them on the hit list. We talk about efficiencies. There was a time in this town, that time stood still. We're on the move now. You know, you could look at efficiencies, and you have a quick gain. But then the higher you get, the harder it gets to increase that gain. And I think that's where we're at now. I think there's issues. I have problems with the Board of Ed. I have problems with the town. But it's not reason to vote no. We have to keep the town running. There's ways to deal with it. And I think it was a very bold move by the First Selectmen and the Chairman of the Board of Education to approach the Board of Finance. They surrendered some monies. And the thing is, cowards usually don't do that. Board of Finance accepted without reservation. Cowards would fight for their own turf, but everyone cooperated. I think we're in a good place right now. This impact right now is not gonna have much of a difference with the school system. They're gonna operate... The ceilings are not gonna fall in, believe me. I've had years of experience with their budgets. I know their operations. They're gonna cut things like library books, maybe a few site improvements. They're gonna stretch a little bit here. The only thing we have to worry about is if we run into a bad winter, they're gonna use more fuel. That's one issue. We got a $7 million undesignated fund balance. Well, I think it's time that we make that a designated fund balance. What the actual intent of that is for? And that's to feed the town in the event we get into situations like this and cash flow is interrupted. That's what that fund is for? Let's leave it at that. Flip side of it is, we should have an undesignated fund balance controlled by the Board of Finance, because, for example, the Board of Education has so many facets within their operations, they have no contingency. Something could go wrong. They could lose an air conditioning unit. Something else has to give. I think we have to look at doing things differently. That might be one little step of efficiency and basically peace of mind for everybody. I think this is a good move. I think it's the real deal. I don't think they could cut anymore without really hurting... Hurt everybody. It will have an impact. I think they acted appropriately and fairly. And I don't know what else the voters want. Thank you very much. Vote yes.
Who else would like to come up? Well, I'll entertain a motion that this town meeting be adjourned and the budget be passed on to referendum a week from now. Is there a second? All in favor? Make a... I'll entertain a motion, this town meeting be adjourned. Second? All in favor?